The study session today.
All right.
So I'll turn it over to Scott Gardner, our CPI Director, to give you an overview of CPI initiatives.
Mayor, Mr. Commissioner.
As long as there's no pop quiz on all these terms in here.
No, there's no quizzes.
Okay.
What we're going to do today is I'm going to give you a short overview of the CPI program, what it's been doing over the last few years. And then we've selected three of our employees to present to you the projects that they have been doing over the last few years. And we think that you'll be impressed with what they're able to give you. If you have any questions, they will also be able to answer any question that you may have. Essentially in CPI, what we try to do is base everything off of data. And what we want to do is we want to look at the past, compare it to where we are here currently. And then we also want to be able to take that information and be able to project or to be able to identify where we want to be in the future and how can we get there? And by what metrics are we going to track to see how we are as far as that progress goes? So in understanding CPI, by definition, it looks at short impacts, quick things that we can do, which we call just do-its. And then we have our major projects that we call, which are high-impact projects. We call those high-impact projects because those are situations that we have, things that are identified at the director level or above, or even below there. But essentially what it is, is something's happening and we don't know how to fix it, but the results that we're getting, we call those UDEs, which are undesirable effects. And so the effect is what we're concerned with. And what we're actually trying to do is drill down into where the problem is. So CPI ensures that our business is able to be sustainable, regardless of what the environment or what the conditions are that are going around. And so that's one of the reasons why we want to base everything off of data, based off of historical data, so that we can understand what the trends are and what those trends could possibly be, or how they could negatively impact us going forward. So here, what we think that we need to do is, we designed this specifically for the city of Salina. And what we're actually doing is we're using two methodologies. One is the DMAIC, which is what's normally used around the world. And we also have the DMADV, which is going on an innovation engineering side. So as a certified instructor for innovation engineering, we also incorporated this into our training. And so what we're actually able to do is design and verify new processes. So if we have a process that currently does not work, and no matter how we tweak it, we can't get it to be where we need it to be, then we will move over from the DMAIC side over to the DMADV, and we will design a new one. Then we will use that data to verify it, to make sure that it is sustainable and is repeatable. And so what we've done is we've combined both of these. And in our Green Belt training, both of these have been taught, and these people that are presenting to you are able to go back and implement that and repeat the process. So one of the things we always are concerned about as far as business goes is the return on investment. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but as you look through them, you will see that we are doing extremely well as it relates to our return on investment. And as far as the city's return on investment goes, I broke it down so that it took everything that we're paying into the program, which would include my salary and everything that we're putting in. We have your return on investment on that. And because I do do some other things outside of CPI, I took that out just to show you just what we're doing as far as with the people that are coming through the training and the impact that those things are having as far as the city goes. So as you can look down there, you will see that we are extremely well as far as it goes on impact, as far as return on investment. If you wanted to look at some of the things that we're doing, as I said, we've got three of those projects that we're going to present to you today, but we do have other ones. One of the things that makes us a little bit different and unique as far as what's going on around in the city, our certification is certified by the same board that certifies ASQ. So when they walk away from here with a certified Green Belt certificate, that is held up anywhere they want to go in America worldwide. So we stand behind what we're teaching, and it will allow them to communicate and to be on the same level of anyone else in any other environment or any other industry that's actually doing Green Belt certification. And so Jacob, if you'll turn, that's what that circle in the upper right-hand corner gives them that assurance. One of the things that every project goes through is we have a process map. We have process map, value stream maps. But essentially what we're able to do is drill down to truly understand what the problem is. Oftentimes, we go out and we start fixing symptoms. So similar to you have a headache, you take an aspirin. Soon as the aspirin wears off, the headache comes back. It's because you never fixed the problem. And so understanding the process, understanding where the value is in the process, allows us to better understand what the actual problem is and what it's going to take to actually go out and fix that problem. And you'll see that in the presentations that are going to be coming before you. The other thing that we want to do is we want to make sure that we understand that we have to operate with the understanding that you have to be efficient and effective in what you're doing. You can't separate the two. And oftentimes, a lot, what I see is we try to separate the two in that we're really efficient at what we're doing, but we're not effective at what's expected. And sometimes that has to do with an imbalance in resources and expectations. But as far as our process is what we're doing, we try to make sure that our processes are efficient and effective, repeatable and reproducible. Those are the hardest things for us to do and hardest things for us to understand. And so that's why it's extremely important that all of the decisions that we made are based upon the data and not upon a feeling. And so you may have a feeling, but you still run the data to make sure that the data backs up what you think is actually happening. And so what you have here is a list of the projects that we have. Some of them are active, some of them are inactive because they've been implemented before the project was completed, or they're kind of like in limbo because we're struggling because we don't have enough people, so people can't finish their projects. We didn't do the citywide incentive because of that. We didn't finish on time. Where the number that we were trying to hit, we hit, but we just didn't close the projects off in a timely manner. And so that's why that didn't happen. So we have active and implemented projects, and then we have the projects that are closed out. But that's where we are as far as those goes. You will see some zeros by some of those projects. And what that means is they haven't either, either they have not been completed and that data hasn't been collected, or they've been put on hold. Okay? Do you guys have any questions for me?
I'm hanging with you so far.
Okay. What we're going to do, we're going to have three presenters come before you. Sean will come first, Luanne will come second, and then Amber will come third. So I will turn it over to them.
Good afternoon. I'm Sean Homan. I'm the Assistant Building Official with Community and Development Services. And my project is preparing for a clunker cleanup, has to do with improving the administrative search warrant acquisition process. I started with the city a little over four years ago as a code enforcement officer, enforcing property maintenance code. And one of the problems I noticed early on is that there were several inoperable vehicles that were about in town. And over time, that number seemed to be growing rather than shrinking. Inoperable vehicles present a particular challenge for property maintenance code enforcement because they're not like trash, or rubbish, or furniture that's at the curb, where if we provide notice to a property owner, give them some time to correct, work with them to get it corrected, or if they don't want to or can't, then of course, abatement, the responsibility falls to us to carry out an abatement action in order to remove the nuisance. That's easy when we're talking about rubbish and dead limbs and things of this nature. But inoperable vehicles have intrinsically a higher value. Scrap value is $100 to $200 for most cars, and that's a significant amount of money. We want to be wise and make sure that we implement best practices if ever we have to remove such a nuisance from the community. And so acting on legal counsel, we make it a practice to acquire an administrative search warrant, or as you're following the slides, an ASW, right? And this warrant ensures that we have gone to the court in order to make sure that we have checked every due process box for each of the citizens that own property where we might have to perform such an action. So inoperable vehicle abatements take more time and more money than most abatements. And so a backlog is very often the result. In order to capture the data that we could get, in order to determine what we were looking at, how many vehicles might be out there, how many times might we need to secure a warrant in order to solve this problem and begin eliminating the backlog? We went through data for the time period 2010 through 2019. And what we found was, rather than the expected singular line in gradual decline over time, we actually found two distinct lines between, one was 2010 to 2015. We were pretty consistent with the number of vehicles we had to tow to keep up, at about 12.17 vehicles per year. From 2016 to 2019, we averaged only one vehicle per year. Naturally, that piqued our curiosity, and we started asking around among the folks who have been with the department a while, and we learned that there was a staff retirement. And the staff who retired was in fact doing most of the inoperable vehicle abatements. And new staff were not comfortable with the current process. And so we saw a window of opportunity. Now, looking at the data, it was easy enough because there were two distinct lines. We assumed that from 2010 to 2015, we were doing a better job of keeping up with the demand for removing these types of nuisances from the community. So we subtracted the one vehicle average per year toes from 2016 to 19, from the 12.17 from the earlier time period. And we estimated that we had about 45 vehicles out in Salina that would likely require an administrative search warrant to be removed. And that number represents about 14% of the inoperable vehicles that we identified by inspection in March 2021. We went, as we did other duties and were doing inspections for other property maintenance code violations, we documented, and this is incomplete, but strategic, the count was 324 vehicles when we stopped. And so we know there, we knew there was a very significant backlog and lots, lots of work to do. The reason we found for the significant backlog, in terms of money, we had to spend $458 every time we wanted to secure a warrant to abate an inoperable vehicle or other property maintenance code violation. As you can see on the slide, we had a lot of people, a lot of steps, the process wasn't really clearly laid out for code enforcement officers. And so it took more money than we would like. The next slide shows you that the same problem expressed in terms of time was taking us about 34.4 hours to secure a warrant for those same violations. So we saw an opportunity. We knew it took too much money, took too much time. And so Gary Peterman, who was a code enforcement officer, who had more experience than I when I joined the city, and Allison Hamm, who was administrative staff for Development Services, and also Christina Trocheck, our city prosecutor, were invaluable to me and as subject matter experts in considering the situation at hand and for evaluating and hopefully formulating a way forward that would be better. We had three goals when we began. Those were to reduce the cost of securing each warrant, to reduce the time that it took to secure each warrant, and finally, to eliminate the inoperable vehicle backlog out in the community. This slide is a swim lane map, which shows the four lanes, the four entities who are responsible for some part of our process, and this is the old process. The top lane in blue is for the code enforcement officer. Under that, in tan, is the administrative staff for Development Services. Then the green lane belongs to Clark Myes-Linville staff. And the pink lane at the bottom is court staff, and that would be district court staff. What I'd like for you to notice, besides the four entities, if you'll follow the emboldened arrows from the upper-left corner, you'll see that there's a distinct W shape represented here by our process. There's a dip from the top through lane three, back up to the top, down to four, back up again. I'll comment on that in just a bit. Taking those same process steps and plugging them into an XY matrix, and you can see the process steps at the left. The column to the left has some steps that are in white font and some that are in gold. Now, those process steps which are white are actually nonessential for getting us what we need. They were not helpful at all towards securing a warrant, and yet we were employing these in our process. The gold steps are those we identified as key process inputs. And put simply, those are preparing an affidavit, having the affidavit signed and notarized, presenting that affidavit to the judge, and finally, the judge issuing a warrant, which allows us to do what we need to do. If you work from left to right across this matrix, you'll see that there are numbers that represent values assigned, and those denote impact upon some key process outputs. The first of those are external, that is having to do with citizens. How timely could we be and how cost-effectively could we carry out property maintenance code abatements requiring a warrant? And then internally, a little further right, did each of these process steps help us to be timely and cost-effective with respect to internal processes and staff utilization? Did they help us to reduce the backlog that we knew was out in the community? And finally, did they help us to produce consistent abatement action? And if you will look at the right side of the matrix, you'll notice especially some red text in the rank and total columns. The rank column shows you, in order of highest impact to least impact, those steps which took the most time and the most money, and so most negatively affected our ability to do our job quickly and efficiently and as least expensively as possible. If you'll notice, three of the four most impactful steps are actually white text, meaning they weren't even necessary to the process at all. So we saw a real opportunity to eliminate some unneeded steps and realize some helpful gains. Also, the number one most impactful step, that of Clark Myes-Linville staff, preparing an affidavit for us, was very impactful, and you can imagine why. Those folks do a wonderful job for us, but they don't work for free. And so we saw an opportunity. If we could bring warrant writing, affidavit writing, rather, in-house, then we could potentially eliminate a significant expense in the process. So the old process, now, if you take the process map that you saw earlier, and you combine that data with the process map we just looked at in the XY matrix, you might get something like this value stream map. So this map shows you each process step. Those are the rectangles with the, with the process steps in them. You can follow the blue arrows through the entire process. Each step has either a green or an orange rectangle affixed at the bottom. And the green color indicates a value-added step in our process. These are those things that are absolutely helpful and critical. The orange color connotes non-value-added steps in the process. And then further within the colored boxes, you'll see a cost number at the top, measured in dollars for each process step, and also a time spent for each step, measured in hours. And so you can see at a glance that we had several steps that were not necessary. We had several steps that cost a pretty good chunk of change. And it shows you that we had opportunity to make the process simpler, cleaner, to take fewer steps, and also to cost significantly less money. Down at the bottom of the slide, you'll see in summary that every warrant that we acquired under the old process took seven and a quarter hours of staff time, about 34.4 hours of real time, and about $458 each. Now, this map shows our new process. This is configured in exactly the same way. The colors mean the same thing. We are now down to six steps, only one of which might be considered non-value adding. However, I want to comment that Block Two on the upper level, the city prosecutor examining our affidavit for completeness before submission to court is a very important quality control measure for us to keep our process in control and ensure that everything is in fact ready for the court when it gets there. In fact, it was a wonderful thing when Ms. Trocheck notified us that she was more than willing to review our affidavits in order that they would be completely ready for court. And, and so we did leave that step in the process. And so looking down at the bottom, again, this, this map is configured in exactly the same way as the last. Under our new process, every warrant now takes five hours or fewer process time, about 24 hours actual time, and costs $134. Now, the old process map, the swim lane map that you saw, remember there were four lanes, and there was a distinct W shape. And now the new process, put simply and quickly, consists of only three lanes, and we have only one dip and return to the top, a V shape, exceptionally efficient compared to what we did. And part of that reason is because of Ms. Trocheck and her willingness to help us to make sure that we are ready for court, using her as a proofreader and a person to check what we have to submit to the judge. Also, we knew at the outset that if we were going to take affidavit writing in-house, that we would have to come up with a template. And having done some affidavit writing and warrant writing in previous work, I knew the legal requirements, but I thought there was probably no need to reinvent the wheel. In a training event, I reached out to code enforcement officers from other municipalities, and the Director of Property Maintenance Code Enforcement from Topeka reached out and was very helpful in calling me back and letting me know that what I was doing was in fact exactly what they had done a few years earlier for similar reasons. And he was kind enough to provide a template that they used to submit to their district court judges. And again, I didn't need to reinvent the wheel. I simply customized that to be our own and passed that to Ms. Trocheck, and she took care of making sure that the judge would accept that format. So we had an affidavit form. At this point, we were trying to figure out, where are the weak spots? Where are the opportunities for failure in this new process? We wanted to test this a bit in theory before we implemented. And so we, we put the process to a potential failure mode and effects analysis. And in summary, as long as we were to be sure that the affidavit was prepared well, that all legal requirements were met, and everything was presented in an orderly way, we were very likely to get the desired outcome, to get the warrant in a timely fashion and be able to do what we needed to do. You can see as, and you may not be able to read the small text, but I'll tell you, working left to right, first column is all of the process steps you saw before. The other columns moving to the right have to do with the severity of an error at each process step, how likely this error is to occur, and then what is our ability to detect the error and take care of it before it has consequences? And when tabulated, these three factors allowed us to assign a risk priority number to every step in our process. And again, the affidavit preparation was most significant. If we could get that right and control that, then we were unlikely to have significant errors or breakdowns in the process. And so in addition to having a proofread by Development Services staff before submission to Ms. Trocheck, we have our city prosecutor reading the affidavit before it goes to court and ensuring for us that the outcome will be very much what we want. So that, that was a great mitigation measure that was identified, and thankfully, she was willing to help us with that. Being pretty confident that we had the process ready for implementation, we, we did so. So far, due to staffing challenges, we have not been as, as quick to do as many of these as we would like. We've requested five warrants so far, using the new process and the affidavit. And one of these was for an inoperable vehicle. Two of the early warrants we requested, every party in the process was taking a little longer than it takes now because it was new. And we were advising property owners as the process went along, we've gone to the court to get a warrant, you have a little bit more time, but it's not much to correct this violation. If you can get it done, then that would be great. Two of them did. And so we were able to cancel the, the warrant requests and move on. We did receive three administrative search warrants under this new process, and we have served two of those. We will do another tomorrow. We actually just got the third one this morning. And so what we, what we found, since we began the project, we have different staff. We have new code enforcement officers who weren't around to be a part of this process. And in teaching this process to new folks, we saw another opportunity for improvement. We realized that we were relying heavily upon folks who had been around a little while and knew certain things implicitly from experience. And rather than taking that for granted, we decided to sit down and write much of our warrant acquisition process into the software that we currently use for everyday work. And so we were able to map out the functionality we needed and work with coders, with the developers, and they got that added for us in a matter of a few weeks. And this has saved us at least a half hour per warrant. And actually, for inoperable vehicles, it's more like an hour. The one that I received this morning, we, we cut the total process time by an hour because the software will prompt our code enforcement officers when a warrant is needed to prepare the affidavit. It will give them alert if they haven't prepared the affidavit in a timely fashion. And for subsequent steps, for turning that in, for picking up the warrant, for serving the warrant, and actually taking care of everything within statutory guidelines, we have all of that written into the software now, in order that the software really leads each officer through the process every time we utilize it. The bottom of this page shows that we did have an unexpected change in the end of the process, where we were expecting to receive these warrants electronically. The judge preferred to issue them in hard copy and place them in the mailbox of the city prosecutor. And so that, that office has been very kind again in bringing those downstairs to us whenever they're ready. And so it takes about an extra half hour, I estimate, but the innovation that we found, the refinement we found in software has more than made up, such that we are doing better than projected in terms of savings for the overall process. So, next slide, please. What are the potential savings in the first year of implementation? $25,884. Most of those dollars come from cost avoidance in both eliminating the backlog and keeping up with the approximately 12 vehicles per year that need to be towed that come into the city limits anew. That's because the new process is very significantly less expensive than the old. There's another important element I haven't talked about yet, and that is a cost recovery element that amounts to about $7,400 in the first year. And that has come into play because whenever we would carry out a property maintenance code violation abatement for any other type of violation, we would charge $130 administrative fee. See, we have expenses related to deed research and other administrative tasks that we have a fee set that we would charge, but we were not charging this every time we towed an inoperable vehicle. No one knows why. We weren't. Code says we ought to, and now we are. And so that actually allowed us to see a recovery element of $130 per warrant, which is very helpful. Next slide, please. So where are these first-year savings? Well, as you can see, the lion's share has to do with Clark Myes-Linville fees that we no longer have to pay, right? They do important things for us, we're happy to pay them, but we can bring this one in-house and save almost $18,000 in eliminating our inoperable vehicle backlog. Also, the admin fee collections I just described amounts to $7,410 in the first year, and about $700 in staff wages saved because the process is less cumbersome than before. There are also time savings in the first year, and that is that we will be able to allocate or reallocate to other And that is that we will be able to allocate or reallocate to other tasks about 157 hours that will save eliminating this backlog under the new process as opposed to the old. And we'll spend about 593 hours not waiting for warrants this year, where we would have under the old process. The bottom line, the potential cost of obtaining an administrative search warrant today under the new process is $4. When we began, the cost was $458 each. And so, in eliminating the inoperable vehicles around, the $458 to $4 change is obviously significant. We realize that through $324 in legal fees on average for services that Clark Myes-Linville had been providing. And now, we're taking care of that through Development Services staff hours and also city prosecutor staff hours. Also, we have the $130 admin fee that we are now charging the property owner when we have to correct, as we do with all other property maintenance code violations. And so, that amounts to a $454 per warrant savings yielding a net cost of $4. Also, this process is repeatable. Anyone in the city who needs an administrative search warrant in order to look or to take when it becomes necessary, this process can be used for any and all of them. So that's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions for me?
Job well done. That's... Following all the slides, the first time I went through them, but hearing you describe what's going on, it's easy to follow now.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Is it safe to assume that most of those vehicles are in residential? Or is it kind of intermixed, commercial, industrial?
There are certainly more occurrences that are residential, certainly. But there are some larger properties that are commercial where this is going to be an issue as well and warrant fits either situation. If it's a violation, then we can go to the court after having done, served all due process and done everything that we need to do and then receive a warrant in order to take care of it quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Luanne Everhart. I'm the municipal court supervisor. My project has to do with the jail inmate housing that we have. It's a little bit different because there's nothing that I am able to implement. It's more of a tool to give to the city manager when negotiating our next contract with them. As you may be aware, that the city of Salina is in an interlocal agreement with Sling County that covers the gelling of the housing of inmates, dispatch, fingerprinting, transporting and things of that nature for us. So if you want to go to the first slide. So basically, what we looked at is that from 2016 on, we looked at what we were being charged. And this just deals, like I said, with the housing aspects of the agreement of it. And as you can see, from 2016 to 2021, the increases have been anywhere from 7% to 2% and some years may not have any increase at all for whatever reason. So right now, we're paying a little over $55,000 a month just for the housing of inmates for the municipal court prisoners. Our current issues that we have with the practice that we have is that typically, when we get the new agreement, we're well into our budget year. So it comes out of our municipal court budget. So it really kind of just throws us off. We either have to ask for an amendment or at the end of the year, the finance department has to find us some money to cover that because we haven't budgeted for that increase. There's no data that's been collected historically, so we can't say why the increase is that much or any kind of justification for that increase. Over the years, there's been some practice changes that we've done in the municipal court that has reduced the number of inmates that we actually are booked into the jail, one being what we call our book-in and book-outs. And that has to do with just OR-ing people when they're first booked in on an offense. And that mainly has to do with, there was a special interest group that came about with the city of Dodge City that had a lawsuit that an inmate was being held and he couldn't place a bond. So it was noted that basically, they were keeping him in jail. He was unable to work to pay for the bond to get released. So after that, dealing with our legal counsel, we came up with a book-in and book-out practice so we wouldn't get caught in that kind of mix-up. And also, on certain arrests, they're, what we give them, what the police officers will give them, what we call a notice of appear, which is a complaint that has a court date on it versus taking them to the jail or getting booked in and having mugshot and all that stuff. And then last, like I said before, it was unclear of how we came up with the increase through the negotiation process because the municipal court is never involved in that process. Mainly, it has to do with the city manager and the county administrator coming up with some kind of agreement. So we looked kind of at future ways of what we could possibly do the billing. We could do a flat fee. We could charge it by the days that they're housed or charge by the hours that they're housed. So by a flat fee, that's basically what we're using now. But like I said, we're not able to identify what causes that amount to be what it is. So there was no justification of the current pricing that we have. It's obviously the easiest method for the county to bill us and us to pay because we just know what it is each month. But we don't take into consideration of the current practices that we used to reduce the amount of inmates that we put in the jail. You can use an hourly fee, which is a little more, it's going to be more accurate. However, it is very time-consuming when you're reconciling it. But it would take into consideration your book-in and book-out practices that we do have right now. And the daily fee would be closer, kind of in the middle. It charges by the day and you would round it up to the nearest day. Given in the benefit of the doubt, if it's 23 hours, you would give them a day, eight hours, until it counts as a day. But you still don't take into consideration your book-in and book-in practices. So in 2020, there was a work group that was established between the city and the county. And the group was tasked to find a method of collecting data that was agreeable for everybody. And at that time, it was determined that the jail, in their software, they can actually put in extra information when they're booking people in and booking people out. And it would calculate the number of days that someone was in there and actually by the hours and minutes. So the county agreed to go back and put the data in for 2019. So we collected for 2019, 20, and 21. And just to note that, like if somebody is housed in the jail and they have both charges, what they call district court and municipal court, the practice is that they always get charged for the district court as the day versus the municipal court because it's a higher crime. And so, when we analyzed the data, we used, like I said, the 2019 to 21 to determine the number of hours and the days that we actually are using the jail for municipal court purposes. And then in 2020, when we reached out to the county, they gave us a quote of $53 a day and that's their cost of housing inmate for us. But I think that has now increased just a little bit. So on this slide, you'll see what the data that we collected. So in 2019 through 2021, you can see there's a decrease in both the days and the hours collected. But you also note that on the bottom slide, it shows you how much it is per day. And being in 2021, sorry, I was expecting to be in front of a computer. So it came to like $124 a day for an inmate. And just to note, obviously, 2020, we had COVID. So the argument is going to be that that was a decrease because obviously, the jail shut down, wasn't taking new prisoners. Anyone that had to do what we call weekenders, they were turned away. So anyone that was sanctioned to do any kind of jail time on a scheduled time, they were turned away and not put in. And also, at that time, we weren't doing warrants due to COVID. And so, we obviously weren't booking people in like we normally would. However, in 2021, by the end of the year, we're back to normal practices. So we've caught up on all those sanctions and plus those warrants. So really, the excuse of COVID, it's really not there because what we had in 20, what showed up in 2021. So this slide would show you back and starting in 2013 to like 2007, the contract was determined on what a report was called by Maximus. And it was a consulting company that would basically take a whole bunch of factors in and determine what the cost would be to the city for our inmates to be housed in the jail. So during that time, obviously, some data was collected on how many people were housed for municipal court. But from my understanding, that report was very encompassing and very difficult to understand. And so, it was decided in 2008 to just go on an agreed annual inflator. So from 2008 to present, basically, it's an inflator that's been on there. So there's years, obviously, we didn't track who was housed by either the county or ourselves on that because they just kind of felt there wasn't no need to, I guess. And then in 2017, you see that that's when we started our OR practices, both the book-in, book-out processes. And then on the next slide, you'll see that we tracked how many NTAs were issued by the police department. And this was done prior to 2021, end of 2021. So you see an increase from time we did the OR bonds to the NTAs that were issued on there. And 2021 was probably in 20, there's a little bit of decrease and that was probably actually due to some COVID there. So on the last slide, we broke it down from, and this is based on the quoted rate that the county gave us of the $53. We took the number of days in 2019, 20, and 21 and the number of hours that someone was housed. And you can see how much we would have been paying if we were based on the days or on the hours and based on just the fixed rate that we have. And then you can obviously see the days and hours are substantially different and lower. But basically, on the hourly rate, if you take $53 and divide it by 24 hours, it comes to an hour, related to $2.20, which is really probably not fictional. So I would say probably most of your best data, the savings would have been on your days, not versus your hours. And then on the next slide, what we did is we took the 2019 and 2020 and 2021 book-ends. And we went and figured out on the book-ends that were four hours or less because obviously, you can tell that was a book-in and book-out. So anything over four hours, we counted as one day. And then, so in 2019, 37% of our book-ends were book-in, book-outs, and which has increased. So in 2019 and 2020, close to half of our bookings have been for in-and-out bookings versus someone staying in there for full dates. So that's anywhere from someone being in there for an hour, two, three, or four. So anything more than, if it's 4.1, we count it as one day. So this last slide basically gives you the cost savings that you would have if you did it by day and per hour, based on the 2019 figures that you had. And so, like if we were to do it for 2021, your savings would be $386,000 on that. And those are just, like I said, based on different practices that we have implemented over the years to reduce the amount of jail inmates that we're actually putting in the jail. Some changes that we noted and that would be in the process for going into the future that the municipal court has done. One of the things that we've done is that we utilize our collection agencies higher than we have before. Basically, when someone's delinquent on fines and they basically have no other cases with us or they reside out of state, instead of warranting those things, we just send them over to a collection agency and they do the collections for us versus us collecting through a warrant. And I should say, we don't really collect fines on warrants. We'd collect, we'd issue a warrant because they do not come for their follow-up fines hearing. So it's basically they're missing their hearing to review their fine payments that they have with the court. So in instance, that reduces the number of warrants that we issue overall, which would mean less bookings. And then it would actually, we standardize the practices for we use for the bonding practices and for the notice to appears. And then also, our city prosecutor does review the warrants that we have that are getting ready to purge, whether it's really relevant to bring them back or if it's something that is really, something that should be really prosecuted due to the nature of the crime. I mean, you could have somebody that had an inoperable vehicle that's been sitting out there warrant for five years and it's really not feasible to bring it back for what the, for what the crime is and things like that. So based on the recommendation that we've provided, we would like to see, when you renegotiate the current practice with the county, is to utilize some kind of day fee or even an in-and-out fee to reduce our cost of housing those inmates. And then basically, we would establish a process of when we would round up towards a day versus when is it really counted as a book-in, book-out? Or wouldn't we want to count as a day if it's, we want to stick with the four hours? Do we want to go six or eight? And then, and just basically, we're able to cross-reference how we're using the jail versus the stereotype that we're just putting people in jail and things like that. And the other things that we were wanting to use is that we're looking at implementing some kind of walk-in process. And that's been kind of on hold due to the COVID because the nature of having more people come into the court. But this will allow probation violators to come in and maybe talk to the probation officer, get their cases back on track before we have to warrant them and then have to have them arrested and things like that. Utilize our collection agency more aggressively, especially on fines that are, have been delinquent. They haven't made any payments over, you know, months, years, or whatever, whatever that criteria that we want to set. And also, another thing that we want to see is, over the years, we've utilized GPS monitoring a lot more and to possibly actually add a service that we can offer to inmates that are financially challenged, that may not be able to afford GPS monitoring or for a fee that once I can, that we can do that in-house versus having them be booked into the jail. And that was another good thing with the GPS monitoring because it allows usually people to still work. And that way, they're still, the livelihood is not in jeopardy, but then they can still pay their fines and things like that also too. So, but that's all I had unless Mike had any other things to add.
I think it comes out in the presentation, but if I were to summarize it, that one chart that Luanne had there that described from 2003 to the present, we, the city organization made a deliberate decision in 2007, 2008 to kind of disconnect from the data and say, we're just going to agree to an annual inflator. While we were agreeing to that annual inflator, court activity was actually being innovative in terms of jail inmate days and was reducing the number of days, which is what ultimately, you know, caused that cost per day to balloon. So with this information, I've already been in conversation with the county about renegotiating the agreement on a prison day basis. And that gives us a better position to kind of reap the financial benefits of the alternate approaches that she was describing.
So I'm guessing the flat fee was just based on an estimated number of prisoners per year?
Yeah, I happen to speculate a little bit, but Luanne mentioned the Maximus report. That was an outside agency that we paid annually. They'd go in and look at the inmate data, not just the prisoners housed, but actual cost of operation of the jail. And I think the conclusion was reached at that time that annually, it really wasn't fluctuating all that much. It seemed like it was just kind of incrementally growing. So rather than go to all the expense and trouble of the report, let's just agree to an annual inflator. That avoided the expense of the report and kind of the complexity of that. But at the point that we started to employ measures to decrease inmate days in the jail, that's when that approach fell out of sync with what we were actually seeing. And that's when we probably should have revisited it.
And you'll hear a lot of the counties say that they have contract housing. And we did reach out to different agencies of what they charged for housing inmates for the county. And basically, the county pays $43 a day to house a prisoner out. So in essence, it's cheaper for them to house them out than actually house them in. But I think just transporting and all that kind of things plays into that the factor of what, how they arrange their inmates and things like that.
And one other thing I would add is they've got fixed cost in owning and operating the jail. So even if we significantly cut our inmate days, there is a fixed cost that they're going to need to recover from their operation in ours. So it's not a direct one for one necessarily. But we do have the ability to negotiate a cost per inmate per day and then have it sync back up. And with the added capability of kind of the data gathering and the software improvement that they've got, I think we're in a better position to get our cost attached to... I think we're in a better position to get our cost attached to the actual inmate days that we generate.
Did you say that the cost is actually paid by the court to the county or is that a city?
Well, it's through the court's budget. It's the city of Salina, but it's through the municipal court budget.
Yeah, the general fund funds us and then we, we pay it out each month, but, but it comes from the general fund, obviously, to fund our municipal court budget.
Commissioner Longby, any questions?
Oh, sorry, I was late. Tail end of the presentation here, just a thought I had. The, when the new jail gets operational, the question always comes up with what's going to happen in the old jail.
That I don't know.
That's probably not her department as much as mine, but.
I don't know, it just got caught.
There will be some things that we will have to change. Yeah, but there will be some things that we'll have to change in our operations for like right now. Like when we bring inmates over, we have our court officer that walks over to the jail and walks them over to us when we have trials and pre-trials. So there will be some transporting that we are going to have to figure out once the new jail is out of.
I just wondered if they could work out a space agreement.
We're actually having some of those conversations. We, the group that we use to do the design for the police training facility has gone in and taken a look at the facilities from our perspective. I think our, if we have any interest at all, it's going to be more in the office admin space than any of the jail cells. The cells themselves are outdated and more of an operational liability than we might want to take on. But I think we do have interest in what's currently the sheriff office spaced as an opportunity for expansion.
But that is being looked at, the extra transportation.
It's something that we're going to have to look at once we, once they open and then once we get our places back. I don't, we haven't really decided whether the county would be bringing them over or more the city would be bringing them over.
And then there's an opportunity for video as well as some court space dedicated at the jail. So we may actually go to the prisoners rather than the prisoners come to us.
Yeah, most of the time when we do bring inmates over, it's based on a pre-trial or trial where it's very difficult to do video conferencing on a trial basis. And they really kind of like, for prosecutors and defense counts, they really like to have their defendant present at the time. So really transporting back would just have to mainly be for those two dockets.
Probably going to be increased expense in the future with that.
We're looking, we're looking at all that in terms of exactly how much transport is involved and whether, like I said, we're able to move any of our operation from a scheduling standpoint, whether we're able to go there versus have to transport them.
And that's something that we still may be able to do in-house. It may be an expensive, different vehicles of transporting prisoners back because of the vehicles that you have, you can only do maybe two at a time. And I don't know about safety issues for the officers of having number of inmates in a vehicle and things like that.
I'm just thinking of who's going to do it.
Yeah, I mean, at that point, we haven't decided that.
Chief, deputy chief, myself, and then ultimately Judge Stoss will probably be the ones primarily involved in that conversation. And it's, it's ongoing.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Scott Gardner, Director of City of Mandrake. The ones that Sean's handing out to you, we weren't able to get into the packet due to vacation. But I do want to also comment on what Luanne was just bringing you. There's several other projects that are on hold that will also impact that number as well. So what we try to do is provide the city manager with information so that they're able to make an informed decision and to prepare them, prepare him for meetings that he could possibly have. And that's really a lot of what we do. And so these three projects are distinctly different and they use different tools. And so what you're going to be able to do is get one more flavor of what this effort is able to do as it affects the city of Salina. So we're going to bring Amber up to you now.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, so my name's Amber Pfeiffer. I'm a lead dispatcher. I've been with the Salina Police Department for 15 years. A little, my project's called No Units Available, or you'll see through my presentation that I reference it a lot as NUA, simply just no units available. But a little preface for this project is we're using 2019 data and the numbers from 2021. As 2020, of course, was not normal for many people, but at the police department, our calls for service were down in general. Many times we worked with bare minimal staffing due to our own sickness. And then response times were skewed as we tried to push calls for service by phone instead of face-to-face trying to keep the officers healthy. So in 2019, the police department was seeing two big areas that we were wanting to improve on. Those are those two first bullets up there. So for the whole year, we had no units available over 1,734 hours. So that means if, that means at bare minimum staffing, you have six officers on at a time. So for those 1,734 hours, all six officers were tied up on calls. And then down there goes hand in hand, citizens were waiting on average 17 minutes and 15 seconds for an officer to arrive on scene after calling the police. Now, when I talk about wait time, that's not fire and EMS, that's just police department. And when I use the term no units available, keep in mind if a life or death or high priority in progress call came up, we could pull an officer off of one of those non-emergency calls to get them there. So I know it sounds drastic, but it's not as drastic as it sounds. So ultimately, our goal was to find a way that we could reduce that officer no units available time, which we felt was a driving factor for our higher response time there. Our first step was to determine what we believe the customers, the citizens of Salina would be happy with. And when we looked at national statistics out there, you came up with like Seattle, Chicago, Dallas, Denver. They, those statistics showed that their priority one calls or higher progress calls were running a seven to eight minute response time, which is already way higher than what we promoted for our number one priority calls. We were running at two to three minutes, so we didn't want to go back. And that's where we had to work, and again, they were only focused on their priority one calls. Our project, we really wanted to focus on all priority or all calls, no matter the priority because we, you know, if a citizen's calls in, we respect that it's important to them, whether it's belated or not. So that's where we first came up with our two goals down there on the bottom of what was acceptable. Ideally, we'd want to have no units available, zero minutes, probably not attainable, but still a goal. And number two, all calls, no matter the priority, we would like the response time to be under that 10 minutes. So once we had our goals, we gathered where the data was that the officers were spending the most time. And of course, number one came in as crime scene investigations. Not a lot that you could change there. They have to spend that much time solving the crime. So we began to focus on where were the officers at the most. And that's where these department stores came into the picture, the biggest one here in Salina and nationally being Walmart. So we set out with Walmart to be a collaborated team. We formed a team of Captain Forrester, myself, three officers and Walmart staff, which was headed by their loss prevention of Casey. And initially, working with Casey, he provided that most of their thefts were occurring on Thursday, Friday and Saturdays, which is pretty typical, I think, that most people expect that weekends are busier at Walmart. But what we found for the year was that we were out at Walmart 947 times. Of those 947, 135 of those were simply just follow-up calls, resulting in almost 60 hours of kind of pure waste that we were at Walmart. And total, we were out there 829 hours, which is a lot of time. So one interesting find from this project when pulling data for the police department was that our busy days tend to be opposite of that. They're actually Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which gave you a little bit of leeway of opportunity for selective enforcement or something in that. But the team's purpose was to look at ways that, of course, we could be at Walmart less, but it was very important to us that we still wanted to provide them quality service that they were satisfied with as well. So we kind of broke the project out into two different sections. Our design was what could Walmart do and what could the police department do? So in looking at Walmart, again, they were very on, on board. Walmart was great to work with. We wanted, they came up with many ways, but the three they were going to focus on was their new security measures, which I'll get to in just a minute. One thing that the officers wanted to complain about on Walmart was that the designated parking stall for the officers really didn't work. They did have their own space, but you had to go up one lane and back down the other to park. Well, when you're needed there in a timely fashion, that just didn't work, so nobody used it anyways. And they just parked up front. So Walmart did away with that parking stall and just allowed the officers to park where the fire lane was that fire and EMS parked. And then they were going to change a slight way to the way that they worked thefts anyways. They made up a chart of how belated was it? Did they have suspect information? Was it even feasible to call the police? Was it going to be solved or could it just be something that they worked in-house? So their biggest attack there was going to be on their security measures. So if you've been out to Walmart within the last, since 2019, you've probably seen a lot of these changes from this project. So their biggest area of theft from that picture there was cosmetics. So what they've done is they actually created a bullpen around the cosmetics area. So you have to now check out, there's a person right behind that red area there where you actually have to check out, buy the product back there so they can't walk around the store with it. And then if you look on the back of those aisles, they have live cameras on every aisle. So it's easily seen by their employees who are working there, anyone that's in those aisles. So the second picture here is their next bigger area of thefts was electronics. So they try to have an employee back at the electronics desk now all the time, but when that's not feasible or they're not really open 24 hours anymore. But when there's, when it's not feasible to have an employee back there, they have these motion sensor lights that run across the ceiling there. So again, easily identifiable to their employees that somebody's back there because their motion detector lights at the top. And then their third security measure is their higher priced items. They started making end caps that are locked, so you have to find an associate to unlock it. And then their lowest cost change that they did here is they just made their, so they were finding that a lot of the thefts left out those fire exits. So if they just made the cameras bigger or more signage, it would help deter people from going out the fire exits because they now saw that cameras were in use, et cetera. So again, Walmart focused on their bigger security measures. For us at the police department, our biggest change in focus was we wanted to work on those follow-ups, those 135 times that we were out there that we considered just pure waste. And that really comes from follow-up of them burning a disc, us going back out, picking it up or picking up a statement. So currently, it would take Walmart later that day on a different shift or even the next day, they would call us, dispatch would create a new call for service. Most of the time that officer wasn't working, they were on days off or it was a different shift. So you tied up another officer, sending them back out, physically driving to Walmart, pick up the disc or the statement, bring it back to the police department, get it to the original officer or submit it to evidence. So that was our big focus on that. Some other things that we wanted to do was we wanted to try to provide selective enforcement of business checks to Walmart just by simply walking around, running more traffic at Ninth and Schilling or writing reports in the parking lot when they could. There were some other ideas that came out of the project, but the pros did not weigh the cons. So those are what are listed under those other ideas and they didn't make the project. So our biggest change of focus again was going to be on the different way to submit evidence. So now how it works is instead of creating a call, burning those discs, Walmart just emails the officer who was working the case directly, those videos and statements. So we've been working on these new changes together for a while. And then this next slide will show you the data that we found. So for 2021, calls for service were down at Walmart 55%. This was the joint effort again due to Walmart's better security measures and some of our selective enforcement. We have found that we haven't been able to provide as much selective enforcement as we'd like. We're only averaging about 35 minutes a month, but it seems to be helping in there a little bit. And not all of it's captured as if they just drive through the parking lot or running traffic at Ninth and Schilling. Those might be considered traffic stops or just them simply driving around. So this actually has to be the officers putting themselves out for like a walkthrough of Walmart in those 35 minutes. So with that new way that we're submitting evidence, our follow-ups have drastically dropped 45% as they're now sending videos and statements directly to the reporting officer's email. And then with both calls for service and follow-up down, it means that we are spending 55% less time at Walmart. So we saved 457 hours at the average officer wage. So that's $11,500 savings that can be reallocated to somewhere else. So again, ideally, we want to have no units available, zero minutes, which is probably not attainable. But just by working with Walmart and some other little changes that we made for the whole year, our no units available did drastically drop down to 908 hours. So it's down 48% for the year. So as you can see, by working with Walmart, we could decrease the time spent there and it did help our overall no units available time go down. And then another huge benefit of the project, as you can see for our Walmart alone, they were down $1.86 million in loss due to theft. So their shrinkage decreased for that time, 1.86 million just out of our own Walmart. So again, that comes back to no reflecting sales tax and benefits to the citizens, so. All right, so I didn't just want to stop at Walmart. I wanted to look at what happened to our overall call-response times for all citizens when that no units available time went down. So I just randomly selected 50 calls for service. Keep in mind, 50 is a true representation because I pulled them from the same quarter, but we do about 35,000 calls a year. But if you look at the histogram on the left, that's 2019 compared to 2021. So you can see that the process is more in control in 2021. Those red lines show how many calls did fall within that response time that we were hoping for. And then I also put on there, as you can see, I put a line for how many calls wait time were over an hour compared to 2021, all calls for service that were randomly selected were under 55 minutes. So that's a great improvement there. It's a little hard to see, but the sigma level did increase by point two, which doesn't sound like a lot, but in the service industry, that's a huge increased benefit, so. All right, so this again is just looking at 50 random calls. So again, I wanted to look at the bigger picture of our response time. So I pulled all calls for the two years. So this pie chart on the left shows in the green, the 2019 numbers. So we were averaging that 17 minutes and 15 seconds a call. And when we pulled our numbers for 2021, we were running an average of five minutes and seven seconds. So in 2021, we were achieving our goal of under 10 minutes average response time. So as you can imagine, when the response time goes down, the pie chart on the right shows you that the complaints go down as well. So these are looking at monthly complaints that dispatch receives due to the wait time. So in, we were averaging 19 complaints a month in 2019. And in 2021, we were down to just three complaints for that, for that wait time that citizens are waiting. So I know that that was throwing a lot of information at you at one time, so I just wanted to recap. The calls for service at Walmart with the project did drop 55%. We found a better way to submit evidence, which reduced those follow-up calls, pure waste to Walmart by 45%. Officers are spending less time at Walmart, which increased the hours so they can be more proactive in crime fighting approaches. And again, our Walmart saw that huge shrinkage in thefts by 1.86 million. And then overall, for the citizens, that no units available did decrease by 826 hours, which helped us achieve that goal of 2021 for being under a 10-minute response time. Some other benefits that we've seen is just those working relationships. When we go out and we're working with those benefit or those businesses, you just automatically get benefits there as well, those working relationships that I talked about. One example is like during COVID, when we couldn't get in sanitizers and hand wipes, when Walmart got them in, instead of selling them, which they easily could have done, they were donating them to the police department. Therefore, we were sharing with the sheriff's office, fire and EMS, but they were able to help keep our officers safe. So we greatly appreciated that as well. This project is definitely repeatable. In the future, working with other retailers, we could continue to generate faster call-response times for the citizens of Salina by working the same plan. Now again, some of the littler places that we see in Salina that have higher theft rates is Menards, Ace and Dollar General. They might not have the budget capabilities that Walmart has to put in all those safety measure or security measures, sorry. But we saw just with signage or bigger cameras that it could deter the numbers as well. So this project in itself was huge, but already there have been many spinoffs. So in working the Walmart project, we spent a lot of time focusing on those different ways that we could submit evidence besides the old school way of discs. So we looked at, or we came across what's called evidence.com. So it's already a part of a program that we use by the officers, which is Axon, the program that officers use for their body cameras. So it didn't cost the city any extra, but this feature would allow evidence to be submitted electronically. Now, that didn't work for Walmart because of the way they have to pull the format that their video is pulled in and the size of the video, so that's why we had to go with just email for them. But that did allow us to do many other projects so far, saving more time. But that did allow us to do many other projects so far, saving more time and money. So the biggest one that we've been focusing on during that time is civilians now. We try to push them sharing their evidence electronically. So approximately 5,274 cases a year have evidence. We are now able to average about 80% of those are utilizing that new way to submit evidence. It saves 28.5 hours a year from not having to burn and shred the discs from those evidence ladies. And just the cost of not getting discs alone is just a simple $642 savings. And then we feel that we're offering a better service to the citizens because we were finding that approximately 300 cases a year, the evidence was never gathered on those cases. Many times, like by the time the officers could go back out, the evidence was taped back over or they just weren't able to pull it or something was happening there. But we found that now with them submitting it right away when the officer works the case, the officer's still on scene, they call into dispatch, we send them a link and they upload the pictures, it gets sent right to the officers. So again, we've been working with the citizens a lot on that. But then a huge savings came from the district court. So now they have came on board and their case information is now shared electronically from our evidence to them. And what took about 90 minutes for the evidence people to do now takes about 11 minutes a case. And this occurs about 75 times a month. So the savings in time and the money on discs was found to be about $28,744 in savings. And now that project is in the process of working with municipal court on ways that the evidence can be shared with them. Many, many spinoffs have come from just that evidence sharing. So, any questions?
That's very innovative processes and data gathering.
Yes. Thank you.
I have some question.
Yes, sir.
That was a very good project, Amber. How long was this project in the works?
We started looking at it about October 2019. It took a really long time to get started and then like everybody, COVID hit and so it was a big delay. But from that, we decided that maybe Walmart, Walmart spending money to create their own police department office wasn't something that the officers actually wanted. So some benefits did come out of that. We took a longer time to talk to the officers, talk to Walmart and maybe not waste some money there. Because initially Walmart was going to, in their old subway area, make an area for officers to go there and write reports. But when we actually talked to the officers, they didn't care for that idea. Many times if they're out in the public, people approach them and want to talk and they can't get their work, reports wrote anyways, so.
I guess my thought is many Walmarts have off-duty PD security.
Yes.
And a lot of surveillance.
We actually had a joke with them when we sat down with them. They said they had an open checkbook. Well, great, problem solved, hire your own officer. But of course that was.
Well, if they can afford to lose 1.86 million a year in theft, they can afford to hire a couple officers. But I'm thinking that you talked about the sharing of the resources and project. I know Walmart has extensive research on this theft prevention.
Yeah, I mean, you can research it and nationally Walmart's an issue everywhere. But in working with our Walmart, I can say that their loss prevention is A-plus top. Like they, they are on it, they, when they call in, they have good information. They give you all suspect information, like they're very nice to work with, so.
Yeah, I think they could continue to improve on their end and thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get up here and make my last church amendment up here. So did you guys have any other questions for me as far as what we're doing with the program, the growth that it's going through? I'd be more than happy to answer that. Those people who have come up here do actually have to take a test to complete the class. And it's a four-hour test roughly. And so they have to pass that test in order to get up here and to present to Mike. And then Mike and the budget team actually give them the okay to close their project once Debbie and Finance say, yes, we can track your data, yes, the data is good. And then we go forward. So everything that we do, we run it through a very intense process to make sure that what we're telling you is accurate and we can actually prove it. So we want to make sure that we always bring you statistically sound information. And that's our objective for the city manager's office is to give them the information to make a good decision. So that's where we are. We don't ever implement unless they say implement because there's always information that we may not have that they may be privy to.
Well, you're going to probably get a lot more requests for, hey, could you do a study on this? Could you look at this? I just wanted to say that the presentations themselves were very, I mean, great. I mean, part of me felt like I was sitting in high school judging debate presentations, but obviously well-prepared and know your information well, very good presentations and obviously very good data. And we'll never refuse the savings on the bottom line.
I think I'll give you back to Mike then.
I had a question there. Sorry, I was late.
It's okay.
But did I miss your whole presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I was afraid of. Were these considered like green belt projects?
Yes. A black belt project would be more intense and it will cover a larger breadth of information. So essentially what you're, what you're seeing right now are green belt projects, which are smaller in scope. You heard municipal court come up in each one of them. There could have actually been a project that I could have led as a black belt or a master black belt that would have covered that and that I would have broken it down into smaller bite-sized pieces and handed those out, which is one of the things that we're looking at transitioning to. Because we do have systematic issues within the city that we know the city manager wants to address. But in making sure that we have staff available to work those projects with staff being short and people taking vacation, it makes it very difficult for them to assign these projects to get done. So we're trying to be strategic in that. Even as Luanne spoke to you, there's two other projects that are off in municipal court that are on hold that will definitely impact that number. And so that number will be driven down even further once those two projects are ever to, able to get back up and running again. So it is a challenge for us.
And I think Scott mentioned it early on, but our focus is high-impact projects, whether that's cost savings or time savings. We do have a lot of processes that are labor-intensive. We do have a lot of need for due process, so we can't just jettison steps in the process without good deliberation.
So was this Amber's green belt project?
Yes, sir.
And did Amber get her green belt?
She's completed, she is not certified yet.
Okay. And how many green belts do you have?
I think we've had probably about 15 that have gone through and completed the training. The next step is to go to a certification board.
Okay. And how many black belts?
None. I'm the only master black belt here.
Okay.
This curriculum just came on, it's only been on, going on four years. And so it's been a growth from what was done previously. And so what we're trying to make sure is that we do it right and that we implement a process that's repeatable. Whether I'm still here or somebody else comes in, it still will run.
Right. That's how it's supposed to be.
Yes, sir.
And to share the information throughout the whole.
We currently, we currently run between one to two classes a year. No more than seven people per class. And so we're in our fourth class, which would get us up to 21. This last class that we're actually doing is a little bit different than the other three in that Lauren Driscoll, the director for Development Services, has about six people going through there on a huge project and each one is taking on a piece of it. And so it takes a little bit longer to go through that in that particular manner because everybody's coming from one location. And so if you get two or three that are gone, it makes it difficult to run a class. But she's taking on a huge project that I think is going to render some excellent results. And we have a few of those that are in process still that would be fairly significant.
I look forward to that.
I just had more of a comment than a question. I'm a fan of the idea of this data-driven problem solving. It's, this is stellar, in my opinion. And I would imagine that there's probably some benefits that are probably hard to quantify in terms of, for instance, the last presentation regarding response time. And I'm guessing that the officers' overall feeling of going to Walmart or responding to the calls there is different and probably more positive. And stellar work. It's fantastic.
It is difficult at times because I do force them to find the data. And I always tell them, the data is there, but you've got to go find it. And in some cases, the data, as Mike has told you, wasn't collected. At some point, it was collected, then we stopped. And so then what do we do? Well, we have to start collecting the data and then go from there. But we've got to make sure that we've captured enough data to make sure that we've captured all possible occurrences to the process. So everything that we do, I honestly believe that there's data, no matter what the issue is, we've just got to go mine and pull it out.
I'd add to that, something that I appreciate is just the ability for anyone in the organization to identify, this is a recurring challenge or this is a recurring task or a point that we bogged down. Let's take a look at that. And then Scott is able to help lead a systematic review rather than just kind of a cursory review of that's the way we've always done it or don't really know why that is and we move on. It's an opportunity to really take a stem, just turn a look at it and turn it inside out and try to identify the opportunity for improvement.
I'd say we're in good hands.
We hope so. Thank you.
Outstanding work, everybody.
Yep.
So it's always kind of a guessing game as to how long the study sessions will last. And it looks like we're done a little early. So I don't know if you want to reconvene, create an opportunity for any citizen comment before four o'clock, but I'll defer to the mayor in terms of.
We're just going to convene at four o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
This is four o'clock and it's March 28, 2022. Salina City Commission Regular Meeting. Ask the City Clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act Required Notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. And may I have your call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, all who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Well, it looks like we can bypass awards and proclamations and public hearings and go straight to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of March 21, 2022. Item 5.2, award the bid for project number 22016, 2022 mill and inlay to AIPAC Kansas Shares Division of Salina in the amount of $916,219.20 cents with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $962,030.16 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with AIPAC Kansas Shares Division of Salina upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Thank you. Is any item that a commissioner wants removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, ask for a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five nothing and we can move to 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance number 22-11103 on first reading, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements.
This back.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. The Salina Airport Authority was established in 1965 by Kansas legislation. Under that statute, it authorizes the authority to issue its own general obligation bonds. However, the Board of Directors of the Authority must issue a resolution and bring it forward to the governing body of the city for its approval. On March 16, 2022, the Board of Directors of the Authority adopted Resolution 22-02, approving the issuance of not to exceed $12,250,000 of general obligation bonds of the Authority to pay the cost of capital improvements. At this time, I'm going to bring Tim Rogers forward from the Salina Airport Authority to give you just an overview of what those projects will entail, and then I will come back and present your options and what the action needs to be. So, Tim?
All right, thank you. Mr. Rogers, welcome.
Thank you, Debbie. Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, I'd like to review kind of the projects, the scope of the work and the type of work that is involved here. This is a bond issue that relates to economic development, economic growth for our community, our region and our state. The projects that we're working on involve the expansion and track bringing in additional, I'll use the term MRO, maintenance, repair and overhaul. I'll use that term more than once, probably this afternoon. This work involves one new prospect that we'll be able to talk about in open session because it is public knowledge and involves the National Institute for Aviation Research out of Wichita, Kansas, and another unnamed prospect that is looking to bring new work and additional work to Salina. Again, this is all, this work and these projects are consistent with the strategic plans for both the state of Kansas under the framework for growth established by the state of Kansas and also by the Salina Community Economic Development Organization's strategic plan, which both identify aerospace, aviation aerospace jobs as a priority for growth and a targeted industry of our growth. In fact, the framework of growth goes much stronger in the language stating it is time to double down on our opportunities for MRO, and I'll explain some of these here as we proceed ahead. The industry, every time we talk about improving a hangar and the improvements we'll be doing and for aircraft that at the bottom range, I'm talking about aircraft that are valued at $50 to $70 million for a regional jet, and we start talking about the narrow-body jets that go, the cost goes up there exponentially. On the screen, you will see a summary, split screen, you see the bottom left-hand corner is really the whole airport, airport industrial center, the east side of the industrial center. And we are working on, you know, developing projects in available space, available hangars today. You see on the far right-hand side, highlighted is the location for One Vision Aviation right there and hangar 959. We do, we'll be talking about some work that we'll probably, we'll bring back to you at a later time that will involve construction of more large space, hangar, hangar space in that north ramp area. To the left, though, you will see, the top left, we'll see the area we're talking about, hangars 606 and 626 in the area towards the center, right in there, these are the hangars that we're looking at and the prospects we have for leasing these hangars at the present, in the near future. Let's go to the next slide, please. Again, this gives you a closer look in the top right, closer look at that area, 626 and 606. You can see some area highlighted that is pavement area that is part of this bond issue is to resurface that area for aircraft towing, aircraft parking in that area. We expect about $1.85 million of this bond issue to be used for that. Much of this area is common use area. It's hard to take some of this area and assign that to a specific tenant or some of it is providing access for that aircraft entering and exiting that, these hangars. To the bottom left of that highlighted section on the top right photo, you will see an area that will be used for expanded employee parking. These combined, these projects combined have the potential to add another 400 to 450 jobs, aviation aerospace jobs. That is in addition to the work that and the growth that One Vision still sees at its current location. One Vision's back up to 250 jobs. And today, if they can find the workers, they can hire another 200 aviation mechanics and technicians today. Again, it gets back, thank you for your efforts and the staff's efforts on housing issues. This is all coming together and proceeding ahead. But we're being, we're so successful at this economic development work that we're doing that more people want to come here. What you're seeing is starting a clustering of MRO, maintenance, repair and overhaul, and that's what you typically like to see in economic development, a type of clustering like in similar companies and industries that take advantage of our community, the quality of life, take advantage of the training at K-State Salina, the aviation program, at Salina Area Technical College. We have all these key attributes that people are being attracted to, plus a 12,000 through 100-foot long runway and available hangar space to meet these demands. Go to the next slide. So here's the one of the projects we can talk about more publicly. So here's the one of the projects we can talk about more publicly. This is a slide, an excerpt of a presentation presented by the National Institute for Aviation Research, Nayar, to the Kansas Legislature. This is their plans for their growth. That includes Wichita, Kansas, but also includes future plans for Salina, Kansas. Nayar is involved in the design of modifications to civilian and military aircraft, modifications that maybe extend the life of the airframe. In this case, they're involved in the location and the look at Salina is to go ahead and bring to Salina as one of two locations in the state to modify passenger aircraft from passenger configuration to freight. The term we're using in the industry is P, letter P, numeral two, and letter F, P to F for passenger to freight. Nayar presented that they have two expansion steps in mind for Salina, Kansas. One is to the left, it's called Works 1, and this is through their Nayar Works Division. Works 1 is hangar 626 at Salina. Works 2 is the north ramp area, and that is what they have identified as area they would go to for a large, larger project involving Boeing triple sevens for passenger to freight conversion. Works 1, hangar 626, is for narrow-body work that they would be bringing in, and some other opportunities they have that could include some military activity, military aircraft. Go to the next slide, please. So this is that closer look at Salina as a proposed, you can see on the right, you can see the proposal for constructing up to 242,000 square foot of hangars to fit two triple sevens at a time, and that is the longer age plan. Then again, to the left is highlighted hangar 626 for up to 737 work in that hangar. We go to the next slide. So this is, this is what hangar 626 looks like as it is modified and it is made capable for this type of work. This is a 1942 hangar, 43, 42, 43, so it does need some work. It has not been used for aviation maintenance, repair, or overhaul since the base closed. It was leased immediately after base closure by Beach Aircraft Corporation, used for subassembly work and assembly work. So we're really returning it back to its original intended use as a aircraft maintenance hangar. This project requires about $2.5 million worth of this authorization. And you can see the size of aircraft that needs to be, and the pavement needs to be rehabilitated to tow and taxi that 737 that's shown on the overhead on the far left of the drawing into the hangar. The airport authority has some obligations to the hangar to do some asbestos abatement, take care of the roof, and then Nayar will come in and they'll do the tenant improvements on the building. That lease agreement is still under negotiation. We still need to go and design the project in partnership with Nayar, bid the project, but this authorization gives us the ability to have the funding, the financing in place so we can proceed ahead with those steps. Go to the next slide. Hangar 606 is a different project. It is a paint booth project, and that is requested by the prospect. We really call this project Paint, and it's amazing to fill this hangar with two, up to two regional jets at one time to paint those aircraft, or to put a 737 in the hangar and to create that paint booth. It's a $7.5 million project. That's the bulk of this project. That $7.5 million, the lease that's being negotiated with Project Paint is to take that as, at 7.5, and repay that through a, an improvement rental to be based upon a percentage of gross revenue off the paint operations in that hangar. Up to six, minimum of six aircraft per month in the project in the hangar. Average price of a paint job on one of these jets is a quarter of a million dollars. So that's the side, that's the type of revenue that's involved there. Creates new jobs, especially as far as aircraft paint. Again, partnerships with K-State Salina, partnerships with Salina Area Technical College. It's a electrostatic paint operation, which is newer, state-of-the-art, very environmentally compatible, and really brings in a new capability. One Vision, right now, I can let you know that when they have aircraft paint that needs to be completed in projects, they're sending aircraft as far away as Canada, definitely outside of the state of Kansas. This would be the only third-party paint facility in the state of Kansas, and that is significant. Yes, their paint facilities in Wichita, Kansas, they're operated by Textron, and they're not open to outside business coming in, whether it's airlines, the military, or corporate aviation, corporate jets. I think, Jason, that was, that was the slide. Maybe go back, maybe to one of the overheads as far as the areas that we're looking at, and that'll be fine, that'll be good. And the total authorization is, is to keep this project moving so that the authorization is in place, approving the airport authority's action on, and consenting with no contingencies, no limitations to move ahead with the bond issue. Airport Authority uses the same bond cancel as the city of Salina, Gilmore and Bell. We utilize the services of the same financial advisor in Stifel. So we coordinate very closely with the city since we do have an overlapping tax base. The airport authority has the capability to issue these bonds according to the state statute, as Debbie Pack mentioned, and we are capped by statute to 10% of the assessed valuation of the city of Salina. Our total remaining capacity at the present time is $26 million, based upon the most recent assessed valuation of that from last year. So the capacity is there to issue the bonds. We will then be with the action by the city commission today. If approved, the airport authority will be able to proceed ahead with project design, will be able to proceed ahead with lease negotiations with Nayar and Project Paint, and continue to move ahead to bring these new opportunities to our, to our community, our region, and the new jobs. Be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Start this end. Questions? I have none.
Yeah, Project Paint, that's a third company who their primary customer would be One Vision?
Not able to, I can, I can't, it's a potential customer, One Vision, yes, but there's other customers that would be.
But it's a totally separate company we're talking about that's unnamed.
I can't, I'd rather not provide all that information this time in the public forum.
Right.
That was discussed with the airport authority board in executive session.
Nayar coming in, and the labor issue just puzzles me. Are they aware of the?
Oh, very much so. And the executive director for Nayar, Dr. John Tomlin, has met with the Salina, Slane County Chamber, Salina EDO, and K-State executives team, and there is a commitment that Nayar will be working with K-State, working with the Salina Chamber on those recruitment efforts. You know, it's a, I describe the aviation industry as, and workers as a bit nomadic. One Vision has had workers in that were in Salina, and during the winter, they went to Florida, and now that they don't want to spend a hot, humid summer in Florida, they're coming back to Salina. It's, there's a lot of shifting that goes along. We will, I'm confident that the workforce needs will be met over time, and the efforts will be joint efforts between Nayar and One Vision and K-State and the local community to recruit those workers in. Recruiting the worker is, I'm going to say it's not the easiest part, but housing the worker is the real critical part right now, but the workforce will come. I have every confidence that it will.
Okay. Any questions? Danny?
If, you've mentioned that on the, the paint facility, hangar 606, that you were still negotiating a lease. If that lease is not finalized, would the amount of your bonding decrease?
May either, it may decrease, or yes, yes, for that paint hangar, it may decrease or just go away. The lease negotiations for Project Paint and hangar 606 are critical, and I think we need to get that, that completed. My next meeting with, on 606 is in a couple of weeks to advance that. Again, we still need to finish design, project bidding, but if we cannot, at the time of opening bids, have a lease negotiated, we will not proceed ahead to, to the sale of the bonds.
Not knowing whether the lease will completely cover the debt financing, how, what are your other means of servicing your debt?
There's two other means to service airport authority geo-bond debt. That is airport authority cash and revenue in that source, or again, with the authority to issue general obligations bonds comes the authorization to levy, the mill levy required to retire the debt. And I think that's an important consideration that the commissioners should have, that is, you're also granting that authority to go ahead if needed, then to levy the mill levy required to pay off or pay that debt service. And so that's, that is part of the legislation and part of the process, process that is involved here.
Do we?
I stated that correct, Mr. Bingston?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just, and I know this would just be an estimate, but if the lease, do we have any idea what the gap would be between the lease payment and the actual debt services, the, what?
At this?
Would be as far as the sign?
At this time, is, at this moment, and based upon the lease negotiations, there is no gap.
Okay.
So the lease negotiations at this point, it's a percentage of gross revenue that generates, needs to generate $850,000 per year. It does that, plus a little reserve.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Commissioner Hoppick cleared up all my questions, so we will move on to any public, I'm sorry, Ms. Pack probably wants to come back.
Yes, she'll clean up what I misstated.
I just wanted to follow up with that, the, these obligations do not become debt or obligation of the city because the airport authority does have their own authorization and authority to issue those bonds, so that they also do not count against the city's debt limits in any way. They're all separated. We do have, according to statute, city commission has three options in a situation like this. You have the option to approve the ordinance unconditionally, approving the issuance of general obligation temporary notes and bonds by the city, by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of the project. The second option is to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to disapprove the authority's resolution, and the third option is to direct staff to prepare a resolution, approving the authority's resolution, and to publish a notice of authority's intent to issue general obligation bonds, subjecting the bond issue to a referendum election if a protest petition is signed by not less than 25, 20% of qualified electors of the city and filed within 15 days of the published notice. Those are all the options that are directed within the statute, so that's why they're a little bit different than our normal. And at this point, you could ask me any more questions, or we can move to public comment.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Good afternoon, commissioners, mayor, and I appreciate mayor, or mayor, Commissioner Hoppick asking those questions. Those cleared up some of the questions that I had as well. I, I think that the airport is a tremendous resource in our community, and I'm looking forward to getting more of the utilization out of that airport, and I think this helps out in that regard. The comment was made referencing the housing market and an immediate need of 200 employees now. I, I guess the question I'm trying to ask is, what is the timing of the lease and the influx of needing more employees out there at the airport? And how does that line up with the timing of all the projects that we have going on in the housing market right now? I saw Ms. Driscoll was sitting back here, maybe she will be able to give some information, but as we're trying to mesh this together, yes, we want more employment opportunity, but we also need that housing opportunity out there as well. That being said, I, I think this is a tremendous opportunity for us at the airport. Yes, I know the, this doesn't affect the city debt reference and everything, but when they're talking about mill levy, that does affect the citizens of Salina, so that always frightens me, and I appreciate the questions you asked about that as well. But just, just a question on the timing of the, the housing and the lease agreement when jobs will be coming into this area.
Well, Ms. Pack, I'll let you delegate that question to anyone if you'd like.
Probably, Tim could probably answer that.
Okay.
He knows the time before that.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the, the timing on job, job creation. Again, you know, these are long, it's a long timeline. This is not, this, the paint booth, for example, is not going to be built out in six months or less. I'd be pleased if we started today to have that, and I think Project Paint would be interested, we'd be pleased to have it finished in 18 months. We are in a new era of construction and a new time of construction, supply chain challenges, and, and still the labor on construction is a constraint, and I think by the time you can really start this work and get this project going, I'd be pleased to say that 18 months from now that the first employees are coming in to that facility. That facility alone has the, has the, has the least number of workers to, to attract and bring. That paint facility is automated, there's, it's, yes, it's working around the clock, but they need only about 30 to 35 employees to start. It's the other MRO work that Nayar brings in, it brings a higher level of workers, and again, that project is going to take a good 18 months to, to finish out and complete, and then bring that project online as they, as Nayar receives their first aircraft for the modifications to go on in that hangar. So 18 months is probably a timeframe, and there are efforts, and I, again, I'll let others comment whether or not, how that meshes with the, matches up with what is coming online, a new housing in the few, in the coming months.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Dalton McDowell, city of, or Salina, sorry. My question would be, we know the economy is going down the hill. Boeing's, Boeing has been known, when the economy drops, to let go of their staff. All these workers that we're bringing here, if they would come here, are these better guaranteed that they can continue operations in a downturned economy? Or are we just wasting our time?
Well, I won't answer the first half, but I doubt we're wasting our time. Of course, we'd be working on planes that are already built, and if they're not making any new planes, the planes in existence become more valuable, so I would hope that that would actually be a feather in our cap, but I'm not expert in that field, so I don't see anyone shaking their head no, but it, food for thought, and I'm sure we're always watching the worldwide trends. Any other comments? All right, bring it back to the commission for any action.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve ordinance number 22-11103, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation temporary notes by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of the projects.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-11103 on first reading, and I would assume that mean we have it back next week for a second reading if this were to pass.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you, and we will now move to item 6.2. And thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Rogers. Appreciate it.
Item 6.2, approve the Salina Media Connection settlement agreement and release of all claims.
I'm sorry, I almost forget to look over that.
Mayor and Commissioners Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. I will actually be asking you to approve a resolution, it'll be resolution number 228040, which will authorize the city manager to execute the settlement and release of all claims between the City of Salina and Salina Media Connection. As you may know, over the last several years, we've had a lot of conversations and discussions around Salina Media Connection and our longstanding agreement with them to provide service, they have provided service management of the public educational governmental television programming channels for a number of years. So a few years ago, we had a discussion about changing that service, maybe bring that in-house, and we made that happen last year, actually, a portion of that service is brought in-house, so right now, the casting that happens on Channel 21 for all the government meetings happens with city staff. In June of 2021, the city commission chose to allow the, the agreement that we had to expire, so that the agreement with Salina Media Connection actually expired on June 30th of 2021. And at that time, city staff started working with Salina Media Connection to come up with an agreement, basically following the termination provisions of the agreement that we had. A couple of things that we needed to do with that is, first, we were looking at a timeframe for them to vacate Memorial Hall, and then we're also looking to determine the status of SMC's assets, which includes all the equipment that they purchased with city funds, and then also the remaining fund balance that they had in their account. So that total amount at the time of the termination was $165,291.37. So the agreement basically said, that we had between Salina Media Connection and the city, basically said that anything that was purchased with city funds belonged to the city, and that includes that, some of that cash. It belonged to the city unless Salina Media Connection could basically prove or provide documentation that they had purchased the money, or they had purchased equipment, or that they had funds that were outside city funds, they were not funded by the city. We had a lot of conversation with Salina Media Connection in July, they came with a list of things that they had documentation for, and that was approved by the city commission in late July. Made a little bit more progress over time, but, but really had some, some issues trying to determine how we would handle that fund balance, that remaining dollar amount. So in August timeframe, and the city made a, a offer to Salina Media Connection to allow them to keep a certain portion of that fund balance, based on our historical, the historical funding that Salina Media Connection had, had got from outside sources. We determined that to be about 15.5%. And then we also had some discussions about some equipment that was purchased with non-city funds, that is, equipment that's actually in the booth back here. They, they purchased that with grant funds, and they could provide documentation, so there were some discussions about allowing us to keep some of that, as long as we allowed them to keep some of the additional funds. So in the end, the, we determined that that split would be, that Salina Media Connection would pay us out of their fund balance of 165,000, they would pay us 128,671.21. That was presented to the city commission in September, September 13th, and at that time, the city commission had determined that they would accept that, that agreement, and so since that time, we've been working on getting all the legal documents together and, and to put together the agreement that's attached here. I did want to mention one thing, there was another thing, in September, there was a discussion, a little discussion about the archives that Salina Media Connection had, and the city commission asked staff to continue to work with Salina Media Connection about the archives they, that they had. We have had some discussions about that, and actually, what we've determined is that there are, there are really no archives that went with Salina Media Connection. All of the servers that were housed across the street, and the server that we're currently using, has all the archives on it. There are no tapes, there aren't, like, there's not a room full of tapes or anything like that. So we really have access to all the archives that exist, so I just wanted to let the city commission know that. So really, your options today are to approve a resolution, Resolution 228040, authorizing the city manager to execute the settlement agreement and release of all claims. You could approve that, that resolution with amendments, or we could postpone this to a later date, pending any further discussion or additional information the city commission would like. And there are a few members of Salina Media Connections board that are in the audience if you have questions for them, and I'd be happy to answer any questions now.
Okay, I'll start with Commissioner Hoppick. All right, just for being curious, are there any comments that Mr. Klosterman or Mr. Stevens would want to make on behalf of Salina Media?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, Nancy Klostermeyer, Chair of the Salina Media Connection Board of Directors. This process has taken longer than anyone anticipated or wanted, I'm sure. We're eager to put it behind us and move forward. We've had contacts and conversations regarding our future. Our goal is to continue to serve the community in some way, and to provide a service that is needed, and so we are welcoming and encouraging inputs as to how we might do so, and our contact information can be found on our website at salinatv.org. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any public comment, questions, comments?
Ben Winholz, Salina. Mr. Wood commented that there were, all the legal stuff was having to be put together to make this happen. Do we have a cost of what this legal stuff has been put before us?
Yeah, I don't have a specific cost, I mean, we're just talking about drafting of, drafting of an agreement, so there's not a, there was just some back and forth, just making sure we had the agreement, but nothing outside of the normal legal process.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for any action.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution number 228040, authorizing the city manager to execute the settlement agreement and release of all claims with SMC.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 22-8040. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. And we will move on to Development Business 7.1.
Item 7.1, approve Resolution 22-8023, making certain findings and determinations as to the need for housing within the City of Salina, Kansas, and setting forth the legal description of real property proposed to be designated as a rural housing incentive district within the city.
Ms. Driscoll.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just as a brief reminder of how we've gotten here, and this is our second RHID, and what has led to us doing more housing economic incentives. As a reminder, the city adopted a housing plan in 2016, based on expansion of major employers, clearly, that type of economic growth is continuing. We have seen an increased need for housing. In 2021, in January, we actually started the year off by contracting with RDG, our former housing consultants, to help us update our 2016 plan and get us new data, new direction, goals, and recommendations. We refer to that as the 2021 supplement. As an outcome of the supplement, one of the direct recommendations of that was to adopt a housing economic incentive policy. The desire of the policy was for the body to have something that addressed specific economic development tools related to housing, and talk about how we would deal with those. Of course, each of these have their own state statute that prescribed certain steps, but really about criteria and process that would make those things work for our community, and kind of separating those that met what we were trying to do through the supplement, and those goals and recommendations, and those that did not. With that, we have moved forward and dealt with a couple different projects. Most recently, we had an RHID that was approved for what was commonly referred to as Ryan Edition, or now known as Southview Estates. That was 108 units, and I'm providing this as reference, just to kind of understand where we've come from, because a lot of this builds off of itself. That was 108 units, it's got 42 new units of single-family residential at 225,000 a unit, and 66 units of townhomes at 190,000 a unit. Those are to be completed over three years. Mr. Mayor?
Just for those like myself who can't always keep track of where these developments are, and they hear them by name, could you give like a street?
Yep, so this one is at the corner of Schilling and Ohio. It would be on the southeast corner.
All right.
You'd probably see equipment out there and things like that. As a reminder, as we go forward and do incentives with different projects, in addition to the legislation that we pass, a part of that is the development agreement that goes along with each of those projects. They get down to the qualities that you have prescribed in the policy, such as timelines, deliverables, you know, how many units are created by such and such a date, the types of materials that are used, the layout of the development to meet kind of the aesthetic, community connection pieces, all of those are prescribed in the development agreement. One of the things that are, is kind of the big piece for everybody is the timeline, because in your policy, you wanted things completed in a timely manner. I mean, just what we talked about earlier today really hits home why timing is important. So this project will complete within three years, that is our minimum within the policy. They have commenced construction as prescribed, staff checked that off at 2/14, so February 14th. They needed to commence by February 21st, so they've met that first deadline in their development agreement. Their next major deadline is 8/23, or August 23rd of 2023. They will need to have 14 single-family residential units and 11 townhomes ready, inspected, and up for sale. So just to kind of give everybody a timeline of how those things are going, since the body hasn't had a chance to talk about that since that happened. That is an RHID project, so that brings us to the request that's in front of you today, and how that fits into this bigger scenario. This project being brought to you by Building Kansas LLC, has an overall request of an RHID for 100% 25 years. They are seeking assistance and our support in applying for an MIH grant, or moderate income housing grant, and would be requesting fee waivers. If you remember from our last RHID project that asked for similar incentives, the MIH application came later in the year when that permitting, or when that application period starts, so we would bring that to you probably in August. And then the fee waiver was done at the end, when all the pieces for the project are brought together. And as we'll get into with the staff report, RHID takes a couple meetings to get through. So with that, what we're talking about today is specifically the RHID, and it's a step one of the RHID process. That step, through state statute, says, City of Salina, do you have an area you would like to designate as a rural housing incentive district? If so, please confirm for us in a resolution, which is in your packet, that that piece of land is eligible for that, and based on state criteria that, you know, we have a high demand for housing, we have a high demand for quality housing, all of those things. The nice thing is, we have all of that well documented in our housing plan and our supplement, so we would submit that in coordination with the resolution. If you pass the resolution tonight, those documents I just mentioned, plus the resolution, go to Department of Commerce. Department of Commerce reviews that, and then they respond back to us and say, yes, you are eligible. That basically says, from there, we can move forward in doing activities within that eligible area. What today's action does not do is create any fiscal relationship with the applicant at this point. That fiscal relationship comes with the next couple of steps. If the body passes the resolution tonight and Commerce says, good to go, we start forming a development agreement. That development agreement gets down to those nitty-gritty pieces of how the project lays out, price points, construction materials, and timelines for development. In order for the development agreement to come in front of you, there needs to be a call for a public hearing. So just like in dangerous structures, things like that, we would send you guys a resolution, the resolution would ask you to call and set a public hearing date. If we act on that, then between 30 and 70 days, we then need to hold the public hearing. There's quite a substantial amount of notification and things that go along with those meetings. Primary notification is going to the school district and to the county as co-taxing entities that would be affected by an RHID. Slightly different to RHID versus IRB, or industrial revenue bonds, is the school district and the county have a veto authority. So even if you adopt the development agreement and the ordinance at that public hearing that finalized the creation of a taxable relationship for an RHID, 30 days following that, either of those bodies could step forward and basically stop it. As per our policy, we identified that we wanted to bring those taxing entities into the discussion from the very beginning. I have had a chance to meet with Superintendent of USD 305, which is where this property resides, and also with the county administrator regarding this project. At this time, both of them were okay with moving forward on the project, but it should be known by the body that, that doesn't preclude them from changing their mind. But at this point, the discussion has been there, and recognized that this project meets, you know, important housing needs in the community, and as the fiscal information is presented thus far, they, they, they see the sense in that. But, you know, seeing the development agreement, seeing price points and those types of deals are also kind of that next stage. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about the property itself, since we've gone through process and criteria. The property in front of you today is 53.26 acres, located south of West Magnolia Road and west of I-135. The site has been annexed into the city, thank you, has been annexed into the city, and applications were submitted and filed for both preliminary plating and zoning. Both those actions have been seen by the planning commission, zoning has been passed, and preliminary plat has been passed. As a reminder, I can answer questions related to that, Dean Andrew, zoning administrator is also here, but we would caution that these items are still up for further consideration. Zoning will be coming in front of you in the next meeting or so. Preliminary plat is just preliminary plat, it would still need to go to final plat, and then acceptance of easements and other components of the plat would then come in front of you. So just mindful of predetermined decision-making on those items that still aren't in front of you. It's kind of a chicken or egg thing when we get into these incentives, in order to kind of time all of this right, and because the RHID has several steps, we need to start this process. But the decision-making and the details, you do have a second kind of go at that, as those other bodies work through those coordinated land use applications. The project has access to water and sewer, but neither are installed on the proposed site. Only the far eastern edge of the property adjacent to Dry Creek is in, is within the mapped flood plain or floodway, and none of the proposed building lots are affected. There is a flood control levy between the end of Foxborough's right-of-way and the end of the subdivision. Between preliminary and final plat, we are doing some more discovery on that. You may be aware, we have fairly new flood plain maps, and the, the need or necessity of that levy and how it plays into our whole system is something we're discovering, so we're working with consultants to kind of verify that, and we'll know that by final So this is kind of interesting, this is slightly different than our last RHID. The consultant would like to take a two-phase approach, so in this first step, we're putting a district over the whole subdivision, but the development agreement and fiscal ask of the project will be for phase one. But in timing-wise, Commerce just says, what is the area you need us to determine is or isn't eligible? So it wouldn't make sense to kind of go and do that twice, so we can get that eligibility now. The consultant, or the applicant would like to go forward to phase one, they've noted what they can get done in our prescribed three-year window for the policy. And then upon completing that three, they would then come back. This approach jives really well with the way their preliminary plat has been laid out. So total build-out of that subdivision right now would be 169 lots. They are doing townhomes, so you would have two units per lot. So homes in that subdivision will total 338. Their first phase is going to be 75 lots or 150 units. So that's 150 townhomes in three years. So that's 150 townhomes in three years. So if you remember, Southview was 108. So we're getting more than we got in our last RHID, so that's a good amount, and within three years, which is what the policy prescribes. These are owner-occupied townhomes, so these are not rentals. The developer at this phase is requesting 100% for 25 years. So if you remember our policy, based on desirable criteria, you can score a certain amount of points. Those points determine the percentage at which we can fund and the length or term at which we can fund. RHID is slightly different than an IRB in that it can go up to a full 25 years versus 10. And it's an increment capture rather than an abatement. So it's all about what's being generated over time to pay back those eligible expenses. So, getting to expenses and really per the physical, I guess, before I get to fiscal note, also in our LIVS Salina Plan, we have specific goals set up for, by 2025, we need X amount of owner-occupied homes. By 2030, we need this many owner-occupied homes. In our original supplement, we identified we needed 432 owner-occupied homes by 2025. If we take out the 108 from Ryan Edition, that drops our need down to 324 units by 2025. If you act on this project with its 150 units, that would take our need remaining to 174 units needed by 2025. With that, as a reminder, this request is only to designate that eligible area. But, one of the things that the commission has spoken to us about before in the RHID is trying to understand the fiscal impacts prior to getting all the way to the end. And both taxing entities also made that same request. So in working with bond counsel, we developed a fiscal impact estimate, and that was included in your packet, and I'll highlight a couple of those pieces. And again, this wouldn't happen until we enter into development agreement via an ordinance a couple meetings from now. As I mentioned, Aeroplanes has requested 25 years at 100%. Their estimated eligible expenses from their application, which was included in the packet, is $3,375,000. Those are the eligible expenses that, as that increment is captured, go to pay those back. The estimated RHID increment is over $11 million. That's at whole 25 years. So if you do the real quick math, it says you're going to capture and pay back your eligible expenses before you even get to the 25 years. And speaking with bond counsel, if that happens prior to the 25 years, it will just terminate on its own. So we don't need to set and prescribe that to say, you know, "You've got the eight points per our criteria, you can have 25 years 100%, but we're actually going to cut it to 10." We can just put it at 25, and it will terminate as soon as it's paid back. So that just kind of gives you an idea of those prescribed components. There is a breakdown in the blue sheet that gets into how the other taxing entities are affected. At this time, I would again say, these are estimates. If you're in the construction world at the moment, I can tell you, these feel like they change hourly. But in general, you know, the price point and the determined product that they are trying to produce, these numbers match that. Commission action, staff has identified the following option for city commission consideration. You can approve Resolution 22-8023, and that would be designating that eligibility district and directing staff to then send that to Commerce. You could approve that resolution with further direction regarding development agreement provisions, additional steps to be taken, or amendments. You can postpone consideration on this and give staff additional direction, or you could deny this resolution, which would stop us from contacting Commerce and seeking eligibility for the district. With that, I would rest for questions. I would note that Dominic Eck with Gilmore &amp; Bell, our bond counsel, should be available online, and there are two representatives, actually, I think I see four now, from Building Kansas LLC, who are also available for questions that are project-specific. And as I mentioned, Dean Andrews, zoning administrator, is also here if there are some very specific questions related to some of the land use actions.
As far as the options, providing amendments regarding the development agreement would actually occur at a subsequent time, that's not really the purpose of today's action.
It is always within your purview, I suppose, to say, you know what, as you go into the development agreement drafting process, staff, X, Y, and Z. But ideally, the way this normally works is, we have a fairly boilerplate development agreement, similar to what we did with Southview Estates or Ryan Edition, and it's similar to what Gilmore &amp; Bell has done with other communities. We would draft that, and then yes, you do have at the public hearing the opportunity to address things in the development agreement.
Any questions? Commissioner Longby?
Yeah, the dynamics of housing has changed dramatically in the last year. Number one, are they going to be able to build a substantial quality house for two and a quarter with the increase in materials?
I cannot speak for the developer, but I remain cautiously optimistic. These aren't drastically different numbers than what we saw from Southview Estates. You know, they're in the 190 and 225 category, these are at 250. So they are a little bit more than Ryan Edition's single-family residential home, but they are substantially larger townhome. The Ryan Edition townhome is just over 1,000 square feet. These are three-bedroom, two-bath product. But there are representatives from the project if you'd like to ask more construction-specific questions.
Okay, and is townhome the new definition of a duplex?
If you'd like me to get real planery, we could kind of go back and forth, but it's two dwellings with a shared wall.
Right, okay. And the other dynamic that's changed is interest rates. Are these moderate-income people going to be priced out of this?
I can't answer that in specificity, because that has to do with individual finances and their relationship with their bank. These homes are coming in, if you look at our housing study, 225 and 250 definitely hit our moderate-income-level designated folks.
I just see what we're looking at today, there's a lot of risk here with this.
Commissioner Longby? What's the levee's importance in this? Is everybody confident the levee that's in there and the new maps are going to support what we have to do to compensate for that? I mean, I assume that if there's, the levee's an issue, you have to build a bigger pathway over it that's going to be more expensive, but otherwise, it can be overcome?
Yes, so preliminary plat discussion by the Planning Commission has addressed a temporary interim emergency fire road that could be designed to take the levee into consideration. The biggest question at the moment really is, is the levee as important as we think it is? Because some of the things that came out of our new mapping is just some of the, of our prior kind of flood mapping showed that the levee was important, and our newer ones are showing it not. So we're doing, we're working a third party to get more information about that, to verify its importance, but...
The concern could be in the other direction.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and just to reassure any concerns, you know, any long-term look at creating a permanent road there if the levee becomes, you know, not as important as we think it is, would create a whole process that involved neighborhood notification and things like that. At this point, for the preliminary plat, which I'll remind, preliminary, not final plat, preliminary plat identifies a temporary interim emergency road that is there through phase one. In order for that project to continue to phase two, it has to have a secondary permanent access. So that road, as proposed in preliminary plat, is just a temporary interim road, and is not meant to be there forever. But if, as things progress down the way, you know, it's always nice to have additional access points. If that's something that's desired and the levee isn't as critical as we think it is after additional research, and that's something that's desired, that's its own separate process. But even if the levee isn't as important as we think it is, and you popped a permanent road in there, it does not, per fire code, change the need for a second remote access. And there's a measurement requirement in there related to the size of the development, and needing to be at least half that maximum width plus. So the secondary access really has to be on the other side of the development. It can't be kind of in that same corner where everybody's trying to access Centennial or Foxborough. And it is in the preliminary plat conditions, and we would intend it to be part of final plat, and it has been recognized that it would be part of the plat notes, that a second phase could not even start until that second access is confirmed and ready to build.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I guess I have a couple of questions. I have probably more comments than I do questions. You talked about capturing the $11 million in property tax. Was that on the full thing or just on the first phase?
So you actually don't capture the whole $11 million. You only capture the $3,375,000.
If it were the full 25 years, you said that there'd be $11 million worth of property tax available, correct?
If, it can only go until it pays back its eligible expenses.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, Commissioner Longby said there was risk. To me, if we have the ability to capture $11 million and we really need to capture 3.375, I'm not sure there's that much risk there.
And the one thing I would add to the conversation is, I believe that 3.3 number is kind of the loan value, the present value, and as we all know, with interest costs, what you actually pay in the way of loan payments is more than just the loan value. But to Ms. Driscoll's point, at the point that the loan that is paid off, we would stop and that would return to the tax rolls.
Right.
So it looks like there's capacity.
It looks like there's plenty of capacity there.
Correct. So if you're asking, "How high of a risk is it for us?", we would not even need, the project would not need the full 25 years to pay itself back.
Right, that's what I was trying to get at. I think that because of the ratios there, I think the risk is, to me, looks minimal.
Well, and that's based, I would just say, that's based on predetermined assumptions right now of the value of the property. These are not income-restricted. So, if these are very popular units and the market is liking them, the taxes may go up, and it can actually pay itself back faster. These are based on knowns right now, and it has these paying itself off at year nine or 10. Is it easy for that to go, or 11, or is that easier to go towards eight? You know, there's some wiggle room there, just depending on what the market does. But it is dependent on how fast those pay themselves back.
I think another key point with respect to risk is, once again, this is a pay-as-you-go approach. The developer's going to take out the loan.
Right.
On the basis of that property tax being generated over time and being redirected back to them. So they're the ones that are at risk on the initial loan, and then the property tax increment being available to pay them back.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Mike.
So the risk is really to the borrower, not to the city.
Correct.
Yeah, I might clarify to Commissioner Hoppeck, I see risk for the developer.
I don't care, that's their problem. That's why they're developers and not me. Sorry, guys.
Well, and if you hearken back to the housing study conversation that we've had, it's this very issue that we've said, you know, the incentives are intended to try to mitigate some of that risk to get housing activity in our market.
Yeah.
I think given its price point and the proximity to the new jobs in the airport, we'd be remiss not to give this the go-ahead.
Well, and I guess I'll make comments before the public, but, you know, even before I was on the commission, we've always kept hearing, you know, "We need affordable housing," which I don't like that word, because affordable's different to everyone in this room. And you may use the word workforce housing, or moderate income, or whatever, but right now, as we've discussed for over a year, we basically have the trifecta in housing going on right now. We have the highest demand that Salina's ever had, we've already discussed that. We have the lowest inventory, in fact, a couple weeks ago, we had 35 homes on the market. That doesn't even come close to filling the need we have. And we have, you know, maybe the highest construction cost we've ever had. So without doing an RHID or something like this and them doing the MIH, you can't get the cost of construction down to make the homes affordable for the jobs we have coming in. And so, to me, I don't know what choices we really have, except to do these type of projects. It's no different than when we discussed, you know, a year and a half ago, when we were doing the IRBs for the apartment complex, you know, to drive the construction cost down, to get the rents down. It's, you know, I guess the good thing is, the developer group that's doing this, I know they've been down in Lindesburg doing like properties. I'm glad we're the second ones, I think they've probably worked some of the kinks out, so being the second one in line isn't probably a bad deal. But I'm not sure, if we're really going to try to have housing available for the jobs we have coming, I'm not sure what else we do. We only have so many tools in our toolbox, and this would be one of them.
And at some point, you know, you have to incentivize the buyer, and the way you incentivize the buyer is stay in school, learn a trade, because you can only get the cost of the house down, but so far. And at some point, the buyer has to come up with the money to buy the house. Well, having said that, any public comment? It's an important issue. Nobody has any comments? Okay.
All right, let's bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move approve Resolution 22-8023.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 22-8023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We, well, do we have any other business?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to comment, I got a couple of nice compliments on, I guess, their parking control, but they look like baseballs that are at Billbur Park.
And softballs, that's the green ones.
And that's important, because one comment I had is that we recognize that both sexes are playing ball out there, softball and baseball. But I like the way they look, and I think they're working. I've got, the comments I got back is that the circulation was much improved, and the breakdown when people would park in those spots that those features block now, it's working, so.
That was the intent, we'll keep an eye on it. And last year and in years past, we've had incidents where the parking has been so overloaded that the police department's been called, and we've had to go into enforcement mode in terms of writing tickets. So the intent is, number one, head off the need for tickets, head off the need for the police department to be dispatched, and just preclude that parking problem in the first place.
And I think it sends a nice message that things are starting to happen down there, so.
Yes, that was internal with Parks Department, with some help from the Public Works Department, and that was something we were able to kind of get knocked off in the off-season, and you're going to have a park master plan study session here in the near future where we'll report out some of the rest of the plans for the year.
Thanks. I had the...
That still doesn't address the parking issue at Billbur Park, but I parked in the University of Nebraska baseball complex yesterday, and they had the same thing. It wasn't for parking as much, but for aesthetics, and I thought we were on the cutting edge there, but we're not.
I had the occasion to give a welcome to the Giddians, who had their state convention here this past weekend, and they were very complimentary on the way Salina has the whole looks, and particularly what we've done with downtown. And they wanted me to pass that on to the city, that job, job well done. And it was nice having the convention center at the Hilton Garden Inn, because it kind of tipped their decision to bring the convention here, because they could have all their meetings in one place, and have a lot of their attendees in residence at that facility or the nearby facilities, so. These type projects do work, inch by inch, but they eventually do start paying off.
I did, one other thing I had is, we had a report in here from Jeff Hammond, from the Director of Parks and Recreation, and yesterday was my first opportunity to experience an event in the Field House, and they had an eight-and-under indoor baseball tournament, and there were teams from Great Bend, Pratt, McPherson here, and I think one other community. And there were teams from Great Bend, Pratt, McPherson here, and I think one other community. And they were very complimentary of the facility, and I know they had a softball tournament indoors the day before, so it was.
Indoor?
Indoor. It was a lot of fun. Kids, it was pretty, it's cool.
They just play on the basketball courts or on the --
No, they had on the turf area that's on the north side there. So they had two fields.
Able to put down netting as well, and some of those eight-year-olds can hit home runs.
Yeah. One did. Wasn't us.
All righty. We will now go to the citizens forum, which is an opportunity for any citizen to come to the podium to share any comments, ideas, concerns.
The downtown corridor on Santa Fe with what, with the new land, with the mulch and everything laid down and the beds cleaned out, looked real nice. Just out of curiosity, are we not doing Seventh or Fifth Street? It's kind of ridiculous just to do one when that whole downtown corridor goes from Seventh to where the new museum is, so off iron, pretty much the railroad tracks is the downtown district.
I don't know about all the corridor, but the parking, I could tell you thank you to the city for cleaning up the parking lot across the street from my business on Eighth Street. So that parking lot between Eighth and Seventh, the North Hundred block, they've worked on all the shrubberies there and the trees, and there's concrete work going on, so I'll just fill that in.
Yeah, the Santa Fe corridor was the kind of the focal point of the streetscape, but we've been, and the funding that went to SDI, but we're having conversations, kind of dividing responsibilities between SDI and park staff, also looking at whether all those landscape beds, as small as some of them might be, makes sense to leave or fill some of those in, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Chad Farber, SLINA. I want to piggyback on a couple of things that you guys just brought up. Number one, I love the baseballs and softballs that are out there on Bill Burke Park. I think it dresses it up, and it does give an idea that something is happening down there. I was out there today, and I know we just had a tournament out yesterday and Saturday, I believe, and there are already tire scuff marks on the baseball, the big baseballs that are out there. So I don't know if we need to look at some kind of protection for the protection of the parking or what have you, or if that's just part of what happens out there. The other thing is, and I appreciate Mayor Davis bringing up the Giddians that had their convention here this past weekend. I don't know if it was the microphone or if it was my hearing back here, but it sounded like you said, the idiots that had their convention this past weekend. And I wanted to verify that it was the Giddians that were out there. And I had the opportunity to go out there as well. They were very complimentary of SLINA, and they were happy for the expanded hotel space so that they could have their meeting here for this past weekend. But Giddians, I just wanted to reinforce that.
I guess I better send another contribution. Absolutely, it was the Giddians. Thank you.
It might be useful information that we, if it hasn't been out here yet, that we're redoing the sound in the back of the room there so that you can hear a little better. I guess it's sort of a dead zone in the back, so that's coming.
Yeah, that's a bad misspeak. I'm afraid to listen to the tape now. Any other comments? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, that's, looks like a unanimous opinion. We will be back next Monday.